I think we're live on Facebook if you want to get started, guys.
Yeah, just want to say thank you all so much to everyone that's here tonight. We're looking forward to a really meaningful conversation about just our community in general. We're of course not in the most ideal circumstances, but there are a lot of conversations that we need to have. And our school board members and candidates for this year are really incredible. And I'm really excited for all of us to be able to hear more about them. But we will get started with that as we have more people coming in. So first of all, thank you all so much for joining us tonight for the first student led and moderated town hall in Fayette County. My name is Praggy Upreddy. I'm a junior at Lafayette High School and I'm also a researcher with the Pritchard Committee Student Voice Team and a Student Voice National Ambassador. Tonight, I'll be moderating tonight's town hall with Anna Despa, a fellow Pritchard Committee Student Voice Team organizer and sophomore at Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School. Tonight, we hope to gain insights from candidates running for Fayette County School Board in this year's election. And while so much attention's already been placed on nationwide elections, it's also important for us to understand that local election shape policies that impact our daily lives, making them in some ways more significant than even the presidential debate that so much attention has already been drawn to. So while Anna and I cannot vote, we empower you all to make sure your work is impressive on November 3rd. So alongside other student researchers and adult allies with the Pritchard Committee Student Voice Team, our latest approach to mobilizing students as partners in education research was the coping with COVID-19 student to student study that we launched in May in the wake of statewide school closures. This study fielded responses from over 9,400 students from all but one of Kentucky's 120 counties. And over the past several months, student researchers, including both Anna and I, have worked diligently alongside our incredible adult advisors to analyze this data that we've received. And we've already shared our findings with the Kentucky Board of Education, as well as several other audiences composed of educators, administrators, community members. And we're now in the process of expanding on this data through conducting 50 student to student interviews. And today, we'll be spending some time delving into our findings and just how they can shape policies for improving our schools moving forward. So for tonight's town hall, we've reached out to all candidates and school board members up for reelection. And we really appreciate the candidates who've joined us today, including Ms. Amy Green, Ms. Amy Beasley, Dr. Arnold Far, all Division V candidates, as well as Mr. Tom Jones, a Division III candidate. And we'd also like to thank Mr. Tyler Murphy, a current FCPS board member, for being here tonight. So I'll hand it over to the candidates and board members to briefly introduce themselves. After introducing yourselves, we would love to ask for a brief opening statement, as well as a concise answer to the following questions. What were you like as a high school student? And to what extent do you think that experience will inform your work as a member of the school board? And what do you think qualifies you for this position? We'll start with Ms. Amy Green.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Amy Green. My real name is Amanda, so I had to have a bona fide nickname. So you'll see on the ballot says Amanda, quote, Amy Green. I am a parent of two kids in elementary school here in Fayette County. I'm also on the site based council for our local elementary school. It's the miniature school board for just our building. So I know how we work and make policies. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Amy, I had to mute everyone. So if you'll just unmute yourself, it should be good now.
Okay, so I'm a parent. I'm on the site based council for my local elementary school. I'm a professional educator. I most recently taught at UK in the math department. I've also taught in the public schools. I've taught at Dunbar High School. I've tutored at all levels, so I feel like I have a good understanding what happens in the classrooms, both as a parent and as a teacher. And also being on the site based council, I see the administration side of it all as well. I really would like an opportunity to serve our community. I feel very blessed to be here. And I feel like I could bring a lot to the table and help create a mutual, a community of mutual respect and understanding with all of Fayette County, listen to all of our stakeholders. Okay, so your question, how was I like as a high school student? Okay, so I was focused on my academics. And so I moved in ninth grade from Pennsylvania to Kentucky. So I kind of lost my core group of friends, but learning has always been a passion of mine. I'm very self motivated. And so I found a new group of friends and we played soccer. I was the first girl to be on a soccer team in Shelby County. And then we started the women or the girl soccer team the next year. And so my life was really kind of just doing my schoolwork and soccer and adjusting from moving from a city out into the country, learning to ride a bus. I used to walk to school. And so my change of experience going from being a city student to a country student, to being involved in athletics and being very involved in academics, I graduated valedictorian. I feel like I have a good view of what's going on as a student. And so I think that would help me see what the students need also from the school board.
Thank you so much. And that's really insightful to hear also your perspective. And we'll follow up with Ms. Beasley and then we'll have Dr. Far, Mr. Jones, and then we'll end with Mr. Murphy. And we'll have someone send this order in the chat.
Thanks for having me here. I'm Amy Beasley. I am a mom of four. I have two still in Fayette County. At Tate Creek High School, I have a junior and I have a freshman. All four of my children have gone through the Tate Creek Elementary, Middle and High School. We've been on that campus for 19 years. I was on SBDM there last year. I've been past PTA president at elementary school level. I've been on the PTA in the middle school. In the high school, the kids don't really want me to be involved a whole lot in their school. They want me to stay in my lane. So that's why I did the SBDM, so I could make sure that all the kids in our school were getting the things that they need. Our school is real focused on our English language learners, because we have a lot of refugees in the Tate Creek District. And we're trying to make sure that they don't miss out on opportunities based on our language barrier that they have, that we have with them. What else did you want to know? Oh, how I was in high school? Yeah, it wasn't good. I dropped out at 16. I dropped out of high school at 16. I had to go back and get my GED when I was 25. And my two oldest children were there to watch me get it. Since then, I have gone on to earn an associate's degree in criminal justice. And I'm working on my bachelor's degree in criminal justice right now. I'm a pharmacy tech at Kroger. I've been there 16 years. I am a UFCW, which is a union. It's the United Food and Commercial Workers. I am the chief steward for there. So I have dealt with management and negotiating contracts and things for more than 24,000 members. I'm also the vice president of the CLC here, which is the Central Labor Council. So it's all of the unions here in Fayette County.
My turn. I'm Arnold Far and I teach philosophy and social theory at University of Kentucky. And I have four children. My older three are all girls, my three daughters. All finished, two of the older ones, the two oldest ones live in Chicago. And my youngest daughter is at UK right now. My son is still in high school. He's a junior at Henry Clay. All four of them attended schools in Fayette County. And I guess what I was like in high school, I was something of a jock in high school. I played three sports. And while my studies were important, as my parents and grandparents pushed me to work hard regarding my studies, I tend to focus more on sports at that time. But it was in college when I really got serious about academics and really began to buckle down and work hard. In terms of what happened in my high school experience or something about my high school experience that might influence my thinking on the board. Um, I guess in high school, I noticed issues of inequity. I noticed how some of the systemic problems in our society permeated my school. I noticed economic exploitation, a number of families who economically exploited in my school. There were issues of race in every school that I've attended. And so those kinds of things began to shape my thinking. And when I left high school, I mean, it was in college, I became more and more serious about a social justice work. And although I ended up with a PhD in philosophy, I still, I do what I call liberation philosophy. And that is rather than deal with the very abstract ideas that a lot of philosophers deal with, I tried to ask myself, what does this philosophy mean for the least of these? How does this philosophy help me improve life for the least of these in my society? So there are two things that motivated me to run for school board. So one was teaching college students and noticing how well some of them were prepared for college and how ill-prepared some of them were for college. And that seemed to be a reflection of the schools that they went to, right? And so that has troubled me for the whole 26 years that I've been teaching. And also doing social justice work, as I said, back in high school, I noticed how the ills of our society also permeate our schools. Our schools are not sheltered from whatever social justice issues or ills there are in our society. And I think those things often get overlooked. And there's a tendency, it's an American tendency, to pretend that there's an even playing field for everybody. And it's simply not the case, right? And so I've been spending my life outside of, say, a school board situation, trying to remedy those problems. And the things I've learned in my own struggles and in dealing with social justice issues, I want to bring to the board and improve our schools for every student in our school system. And thank you again for having me.
Thank you so much. That was really insightful. And I really just wanted to preface that a lot of our conversation today is going to be about those inequities that you talked about. And yeah, we're really looking forward to that. And we'll have Mr. Jones and Mr. Murphy introduce themselves and we'll get started.
Okay, I'm Tom Jones. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk with you this evening. I retired from Fayette County Schools after 27 years. I was a, taught English at Bryan Station High School and I was principal at Bryan Station Middle School for most of that time. I served for a couple of years as the director for Community Resources for Fayette County. That was the experience-based career education program. Some of you may recall that as the EBCE program. After I retired from Fayette County, I took a job with the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. I worked as the state director for Kentucky. Some of you may know Southern Association by their different name, which is Advanced Education or Advanced Ed. In that job, I was responsible for the accreditation activities of about 800 accredited schools and districts in Kentucky. The last four years that I was with Advanced Ed full-time, I served as the Director of Education Improvement. And in that role, I worked with state departments of education around the country, including Kentucky, on school and district improvement efforts. I retired from Advanced Ed in 2016, but continue to lead diagnostic reviews and district accreditation reviews outside of Kentucky through 2019. I am a lifelong resident of Kentucky. My wife is also an educator. We've lived here all of our, all of our lives. And we've lived in the, in the third district for 30 years.
Thank you all. And thank you again for having us. I appreciate the work of this team. I've met or talked to several of you in various capacities. My name is Tyler Murphy. I currently serve on the school board. I represent the second district, which covers downtown Lexington in the northern half of Fayette County. I'm over in Masterson Station myself. I'm an educator as well. I teach in Boyle County High School, AP, US Government AP World History. So I'm excited to be on here, excited to be here with the candidates, and excited always as a board member to talk to our students, because I certainly wish that we as board members had more opportunity and created more opportunities for our students to engage in the decision-making process. So thank you again for having me. I look forward to the conversation. And oh, the questions, what was I like in high school? Frankly, I was like many of you, and I'm not, I'm not saying that to earn some brownie points. I was one of those students who was engaged, who, you know, involved in student government and not afraid to make waves and bring concerns of the students to administrators, attending board meetings and those types of things. So very much involved in that way. And as far as qualifications, I think having the voice of an educator on the school board is very important. It's crucial, because that's a perspective, especially in a time like now, that we need to consider as we make decisions that impact what happens on the ground in our classrooms.
Perfect. Thank you all so much for the introductions and just for a brief, you know, insight into what we're going to talk about today. A lot of the issues of inequity and just the incorporation of the voices of students and marginalized peoples and decision-making processes are going to be really big, a big part of tonight's conversation. So today, we are joined with students, parents, educators and other community members who've all posed a wide range of questions to you all, these candidates, some of which will be covered through our five segments. But if at any point you do have a follow-up question to ask, feel free to type these in the chat. However, because we are on a really tight schedule, we cannot guarantee that every question will be answered. But tonight's conversation will generally be centered around ways in which we can make our schools more equitable and resources and opportunities more accessible to underserved students, as well as ways we could better support our district's educators. We want to preface that this is, of course, a nonpartisan discussion that's entirely grounded in improving Fayette County public schools. So before we begin, we'd like to establish a brief layout for this town hall. Our segments will cover school reopening plans, teacher support, budget allocation plans, findings from our coping with COVID-19 student to student study, and we'll culminate with the final call to action respectively. Each question will be posed to one candidate or board member, and other candidates will then have the chance to respond in an open discussion format. We ask that each respondent be mindful of our time constraint and keep responses to around one minute. With that, we'll begin.
A highly contested issue over the past month has been reopening schools in the midst of a growing number of cases during this pandemic. For this question, we will start with Dr. Far. Based on the concerns and challenges that both students and educators have voiced about remote learning, including the ones outlined in our coping with COVID-19 study, and the potential health risks of going back to school in person, what is your ideal reopening plan? You'll have around one minute to answer.
First of all, I want to say that I take the virus seriously. And I have to begin by saying that because I think so many people in our society do not. And that's why I think we're in the predicament we're in at this late date. Given that, I do think that we might be in this place for a while. And given the struggles that a lot of families have faced, the extreme hardships they face in terms of juggling work and teaching the children and having children at home, I think it's inevitable that we're going to have to get them back into the classroom. And part of that, I think there has to be a discussion between parents, students, teachers, administrators and school board members as to how to do that. One of the things I would like to do if I'm elected, one of the first things on my list is to do a walkthrough of the schools in my district. And I would encourage other members of the board to do the same thing, because what we're going to have to do is reimagine how we're going to use that space and use those buildings, right? How are we going to get people there in a safe way? Another thing that's come to my attention too is that some of our buildings have ventilation problems, right? Those problems have to be addressed and we need to find resources from the beginning to address those ventilation problems, right? We can't put people in a room together where there's a virus going around with a lack of air coming in and the same air being circulated over and over in that same room, right? So that's one of the things that's top of my agenda. But I think the walkthrough and sort of having conversations about how to reimagine using the space that we used before the virus is one of the first things on my agenda, I think the first step. Also making sure that teachers and persons, necessary persons, have the PPEs that they need and the cleaning supplies that they need. And that should not come out of teachers' pockets, right? The district has to find a way to pay for that.
Thank you, Dr. Far. Yeah, reopening schools is definitely a balancing act and we appreciate your thoughts on that matter. We will now open up the floor for any other candidate or board member to respond to our question regarding reopening plans. We have allocated around two to three minutes for this discussion.
So hi, it's Amy Beasley. I also think that we need to get our kids back to school as quickly as possible. I, I think that we should be, first of all, if there's ventilation problems in our building that could cause these viruses to spread, we should have looked at that long before now, because the flu has always been there. So I don't, I don't feel comfortable putting anybody's child in a school that has improper ventilation, because I mean, not only this virus, but there's other things that could be spread. You know, schools, addicts and stuff have mold in them and kids are allergic to all of that stuff. So definitely if there's issues in ventilation, I know that they had said that there were ventilation issues at Tate Creek, but let me assure you that if our ventilation was that bad, our staff wouldn't be there, our principal wouldn't allow our staff to be there. But the most important thing that we need to do with the school right now, and I hope that you guys are back in school before any of us take the board in January. But one of the main things that we need to do right now is have a plan in place. I think the parents and the students would feel more comfortable if they knew what it was going to look like when we do go back to school. And I know that my children have told me that they want to go back to school if they have to wear hazmat suits. I know y'all miss your friends, but, and we talk about y'all's mental health with going back to school, but I don't know what that mental health will look like if all of you are sitting in the cafeteria six foot away from each other, facing the same direction, and you can't have any interaction with your, with your best friend sitting next to you. Or if the kids are on the playground and they can't play together because of the virus. So I think the first thing we need to do, and I hope, like I said, that you guys are back in school before I go back to, before the board sets in January. But the first thing we need to do is have a plan in place.
And I would like to echo Ms. Beasley's thoughts. I agree. I think that we need to see a more thorough plan. I think we have, there is a targeted services plan, so that's kind of letting 15% of the building capacity come back. And I think the plan is to start that on October 19th. I suggest we look at that, look at how that rolls out. How does the transportation work? How does the cleaning happen? How does the contact tracing? If anybody knows anybody in Jessamine County today, Jessamine County just had a big issue with contact tracing, because they went back five days a week and now they're pulling back to only two days a week, because the contact tracing load is too high for their health department. So before we look at sending kids back in either a hybrid or traditional model, I think we really need to look at the medical aspects of the contact tracing, the ventilation, like Dr. Far mentioned. And I think we need to pivot and come up with some really creative learning opportunities. Look at the outside learning classroom facilities. And I know with weather, that might be like a spring issue. But like, for example, our elementary school has a courtyard and there's spaces around different schools that maybe we could utilize that are in the school boundary. So I think that's a creative way that we haven't yet looked at that. And so just pivoting for different creative solutions.
Thank you all so much for your insights. For this next question, we will start with Ms. Beasley. A fellow Fayette County student asked, upon returning to in-person schooling, what safety measures do you plan to implement? You'll have around one minute to respond.
So when you guys get to go back to school, I hope that all of our teachers have the correct PPE that they need. I work in a healthcare profession and not only do they need like the masks, but they need eye coverings. Like they need, the cloth masks works if we all wear them, but there'll be people in the schools who can't wear them for whatever medical reason. But not only do we need to have like our nose and mouths covered, but we also need to have like our eyes covered. Like any part of our body that this virus can get into, we need to make sure it's covered. Not only for like our teachers, they were talking about isolation rooms, so making sure that those nurses and those people who are on the front lines, even the bus drivers, like right down to the bus drivers who are going to tempt these kids before they get on the bus, they need to make sure that they all have that proper M95 masks to keep them from getting safe, because we shouldn't ask our teachers to be in that kind of situation, just to make our lives a little easier.
Thank you, Ms. Beasley. Various safety concerns were also brought up in our coping with COVID study, thus we really value your vision on this topic. If there is anything that any other candidate would like to add.
I will just chime in and say, one of the things that I think is key in this conversation is engaging our folks on the ground. It's our educators, our transportation employees, our food service employees, our custodial employees, many of whom fall into some of the most vulnerable populations at effect, at risk of COVID-19. And we need to explore various options for them. We need to engage and assess and understand their needs. I'm disappointed that, you know, that's only being done in the past couple of weeks. I do think that there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of steps that have been missing that have put us behind the eight ball right now. And I sense that frustration among our community, among our staff, among our students. And frankly, I share the frustration. So engaging those folks in these conversations and in these planning, in this planning, that is key, I think, to moving forward.
Yeah, I also think regular testing should be done of all persons who's going to be occupying the school property. Temperatures checked, and if it's possible to maintain some kind of social distancing. I like what Ms. Green said earlier about using the outdoors if possible. And I'm thinking also about how do we use space for lunches, right? As well as classroom instruction. And the idea that we may have to use very different spaces than we are accustomed to using so that everyone can maintain a safe distance is another thing to add to the conversation, I believe.
Yeah, and I think all of you all kind of spoke to this idea of, you know, at the end of the day, we do need to be supporting our educators and just everyone in our community, of course, has been so deeply impacted by this. But when it comes down to reopening, as you know, several other districts have already thought about, it comes down to the fact that we need to be supporting our educators as much as possible, which brings us to our next segment of teacher support. So as of course, we've begun our school year online, teachers have had a great deal of responsibilities to take on, from navigating a new online platform that many largely had no training for, to finding new means of communication with students and their families. This transition was and likely still is difficult. So Mr. Murphy, we'll start with you again for this one. A high school student asked, do you think there was a way we could have better prepared our teachers for this school year? You'll have around one minute to respond.
Yes, I think we should have began planning for return to school in March. And the, you know, we've had those conversations. We inquired as to what was going on. We were told there were these various task force. But what, the sense that I've gotten now is that a lot of our on-the-ground folks were not engaged in that process. And, you know, I have the perspective of seeing this done in another district. You know, we were planning as the last school year was ending for this upcoming school year, because we knew that coronavirus wasn't going away over the summer. We knew it wasn't going to disappear. To the point that was made earlier, we had to take it seriously, so we had to plan. And the experts in our district, the experts in our district are the educators, the folks on the ground who understand these things. And that's the talent that we needed to engage. Any solution, as I've said before, cannot be top-down, especially in a district with 70 schools, 2,500 teachers, 5,000 staff members. So that, I think, was the first misstep of not engaging our talent from the very beginning, so that, so that we could have had multiple contingencies in place, ready to go, no matter what the beginning of the year brought us.
Yeah, I like the point that you make about, you know, it obviously, you know, thinking about decisions like these are really difficult. We have so many people that have been impacted so differently. And just thinking about the stakeholders within our education system that deserve solutions centered around their needs. It's difficult, but I like that call to action and thinking about how we can mobilize our own constituents and thinking about how students and teachers and administrators and other community members can have such an important part in decision-making. So, Mr. Murphy, thank you so much for that response. And we'll open up the floor to any other candidate that wants to respond to this question. And we'll have around three minutes, once again, allocated for that.
Right. If it's okay, I'll go ahead and. Right, if, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and respond. Um, I agree, um, with Mr. Murphy. I feel like back in March, I was already running scenarios in my head, uh, for what different safe hybrid plans could be, and I know lots of our educators and parents and families were doing that. We were having, uh, discussions with our own site-based council, what can we do as a school, and we were just told to wait on that there was a process going on downtown and that we would be handed a way to handle it. But there was no invitations that we sought, we tried to seek out invitations to be a part of that process and it was difficult. So if I was elected to be on the board, I would make sure it would be easier for people to reach out to be a part of the processes going forward. If there, if we need to adjust, if we need to say, you know what, this might not be the safest hybrid plan, what would be a better hybrid plan? What would work for you as an educator? What could you handle? Would that be, you know, every two weeks? Would that be broadcasting? And look, you know, like Mr. Murphy said, look at the experts we have here. Talk to the medical experts we have in Fayette County and just, let's move forward, let's move fast and let's work together.
Now, I want to piggyback on the comments by, uh, comments by Mr. Murphy and Ms. Green. Um, as one who has actually gone to, uh, Frankfurt to protest with teachers, um, I've always been bothered by the degree to which teachers have been taken for granted, right? Um, even prior to the pandemic, um, teachers deal with a lot of stress, they work very hard and I don't think they are properly appreciated for that. And now with the pandemic, the normal stress, the normal difficulty of teaching, the normal workload, uh, is multiplied, right? And I think they should have been a, among the first consulted, um, in terms of how do we return? Um, and, and an example of how I think, um, teachers are not properly recognized, we have an equity, uh, council here in Fayette County and it used to be the case that there was a teacher on the equity council. Uh, a while back, the bylaws was changed so that there's no longer a teacher on the equity council. And right, so that's, I just use this as an example of how teachers are sometimes disregarded because if there's an issue of equity in the schools and among the students, the teacher's there on the ground, right? She's there, she's present every day with, he or she present every day with the students, right? And so here again is another situation where you have sort of firsthand knowledge of what might need to happen in the classroom to get the students back. And, um, again, uh, they weren't consulted, and so.
Thank you so much. Uh, with that, we will now transition to budget allocation plans. The pandemic has undoubtedly impacted the budget. However, varying opinions and concerns have always been deep-rooted in the allocation of funds. For this question, each candidate will have the opportunity to respond. What are your main priorities in terms of infrastructure, personnel and resources and how would they be integrated in the Fayette County budget? We will start with Ms. Green. You will have one minute to respond.
Okay, so I think the main priorities for the, um, personnel is to make sure we are hiring students that, uh, we are hiring teachers and educators that mirror our student population. I think we need to work with the local education, um, schools at UK, at U of L, at Kentucky State, um, at E K U, and even at Campbellville. These are just the areas that are close to us and make sure that we are recruiting and hiring teachers that really mirror our diverse population. Um, another thing is I think we need to devote, um, budget funds to a, a more historically accurate curriculum. I know this, we just had a new social studies curriculum that went through the district and that was one step forward, but I think we need to continue to work forward. Even the examples that are in math textbooks, because that's what I'm familiar with. You know, we need to push for better curriculum that represents everyone's stories and that, and even in the library. So I am a huge fan of books. And I feel like with books, we can see the world, but we need to make sure our students can see themselves in the books and see their experiences in the books because one experience that one person has may not be the other. And so we need to make sure that we have a very equitable and representative, um, curriculum as well as the teachers that we hire.
So on that same note of, um, you know, once again shaping our policies around those experiences that you were just talking about. Um, we did have another question from our forum that someone sent in. It was a high school educator who asked, um, as we plan to transition back to in-person schooling, how would you support the students, their families and the teachers? More specifically, how would you make sure that all involved have access to the resources they need? And we'll start with Dr. Farr for this one and you'll have around one minute to respond.
Okay, so I've been saying this for quite a while, since the pandemic, that, um, you know, we, we knew that there were inequities, uh, prior to the pandemic, pandemic, we knew that, um, there were families struggling. There were many families living from paycheck to paycheck prior to the pandemic. And one of the things that the pandemic has done is sort of really expose those problems and expose the fact that there's not an even playing field for all students and families, right? And some students and families are far more disadvantaged, um, than they were in the beginning. And now I think the way in which they're disadvantaged is more visible. And so I think we need to step back and sort of ask ourselves, what have we learned about ourselves? What have we learned about our social structures, how's our, our society is structured? How, what have we learned about how different people, different groups of people are located within those social structures and how they are more negatively impacted by others because of the way they are located in those social structures, right? And with that kind of thinking, um, think about our, our families, think about our students and what might be needed to make sure that they have the same opportunities as everybody else. And I don't imagine there'll be another pandemic in our lifetime, but we have to think as if there is gonna be one, right? What kind of place do we want people to be in? If we were to find ourselves in a moment similar to this one again, right? And that's where my thinking begins and I begin to look at now how the resource is distributed so that we'll make sure that, um, if you, there isn't even, even playing field for everybody involved. Uh, thank you for the question.
Yeah, and I think that even playing field mentality is kind of what we want to think of, you know, in decision-making in general, whether it's, you know, within our nation or just our district. I think that's like, that's the mentality we need when we think of equity and maintaining that and preserving that as we continue through this moment. Um, but I want to open up the floor to other candidates that would like to respond to that, um, regarding supporting educators, students and their families with access to resources and we'll reserve around two minutes for this discussion.
So I'll just take a few minutes, I promise. So, uh, I think we have to start like, if you drive around Lexington and look at the schools, they're not even all built the same, like uh, Ms. Green said, her school has a courtyard, but not every school has a courtyard. Not every school has an outdoor learning facility. Um, some of the schools that are recently built look more like jails than elementary schools. Like there's no bright colors, there's no, no primary colors. So I would like everybody to like, take this time to ask themselves, like, what did you do to improve your community during the pandemic? Like, we knew, we know that there's families struggling. We know that, that each, each high school, you all have friends that are struggling. Um, at Tate's Creek High School, we have started a, a Commodore Closet. Bryan Station High School has one too. I, I'm not sure what they call theirs, but it's a food bank that the, the high school kids can go and shop for food for their, their families and no, no, like their friends don't have to know. But most, a lot of the high school kids are working to help pay bills and so we need to start there. Like, we need to make sure that when we're talking about making sure everybody is on a level playing field, that we actually mean it and it's not just something that we're saying.
And, and one thing I would say very quickly is, is we've got to get serious about early childhood education. Uh, if it's, if it's not gonna come from the state, what Fayette County is, is, is gonna have to find some, some ways that we can make it work and at least start somewhere. Because we have too many children and too many of our schools coming to kindergarten, not kindergarten-ready. And so that's, if they start behind and they're gonna stay behind, it's gonna get hard, it's gonna be harder for them um, to, to catch up and address some of these, uh, some of these real and serious inequities that we're talking about. So definitely, early childhood education needs to be a priority.
And I agree, just really quick, I know we're running out of time, that speaking to principals here in town, they are spending so much time trying to reach out to those students and families that they're having a hard time reaching. And I feel like we need to support all the schools with a stronger and more robust, um, social, social workers and, um, counselors, and so that would be an area that really needs to be pushed because that would support everybody, it would support the teachers, educators and the families.
Perfect. And I think, you know, just to reflect on all these responses that you all have had, it's like thinking about how multifaceted this whole decision-making process is, and sometimes it is more than just one, you know, broad stroke policy that we think addresses all these inequities that we're talking about. So I really appreciate that. All these insights on how we can, you know, create a more well-rounded and holistic experience for every student and every teacher in our, in our district. Um, so with that, we'll transition back to budget allocation and Anna is gonna take a few more questions from other candidates.
Yes, so our next question is directed to Mr. Murphy. A high school educator asked, every year we have to cut teacher positions due to a lack of funding, but millions of dollars are spent on building new schools. How can we allocate funds to support the teachers? You will have around a minute to respond.
I, I appreciate that question and, you know, when the other question came up about budgeting, I, one of the first things I thought of is, you know, teachers, that's where, that's where the work happens, right? That's where the most important work we do in the district happens. No, no one has a greater impact on a child in our school system than the folks working on the ground directly with them. So we do have to invest in our educators. Now where the, the budget picture gets a little complicated when we're comparing facilities and staffing is facilities is handled through a bonding process and that works a little bit differently from hiring staff. You also have to factor in that oftentimes when we build facilities, it's a one-time expense. Staffing is a recurring expense. And so when we calculate those things, we, we have to factor them into the, the equation. Um, that's where discussions in Frankfurt about KTRS and retirement are important uh, because we have to contribute a portion of teacher retirement funds. If, if Frankfurt cuts those funds, then the district has to make up the difference. So there are, are a whole number of factors and priorities that we have, but I agree that when we're looking at budgeting and allocation uh, and those SEEK dollars that we're getting, uh, we absolutely have to prioritize student services and at the front, the forefront of student services, uh, i- is staffing. And so the way to reduce staffing cuts is to frankly, push for more funding from Frankfurt and make sure that the SEEK formula actually gets an increase. We've not had a substantive increase in SEEK funding when adjusted for inflation since two thousand eight. That makes our job harder at the district level. And then, uh, the second thing is kind of looking at some of the positions we have, um, where maybe we have some opportunities to trim the fat a little bit. Uh, maybe, you know, s- some of the administrative, uh, positions that have are, you know, where we could lose through attrition or some of those other natural retirements or those types of things. Uh, that may be some opportunity for us to, to find more teacher staffing positions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Murphy. Uh, we have several educators in attendance today, so your insights are greatly valued. Um, for the opening, for the open-ended discussion, for this segment, I would actually like to go back to a question I had previously posed. Um, I'd like each candidate except for Ms. Green, because we've already received your response, to respond to the following question. What are your main priorities in terms of infrastructure, personnel and resources? And how would they be integrated in the Fayette County budget? And we will start with Dr. Farr.
I'm getting the question done. So infrastructure, personnel and?
Um, infrastructure, personnel and resources. And how you plan to integrate them in the budget.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the question. Well, I think they all are, are deeply connected in terms of, um, infrastructure refers, I, I think, um, not just the space in terms of our buildings, but, but, but anything that, that is to be used in the effort of teaching is a part of the, um, overall infrastructure and, and even personnel, the quality of personnel that we have and making sure that our personnel is taken care of, make sure that our personnel is respected and making sure, um, our personnel has a voice at the table when important decisions are made that will impact their lives and impact their work. In terms of resources, um, I, I put students first. And one of the first things to look at is the resources that we're using, that we have and that we're using. Um, how much are the, to what, to what degree are they improving the lives and the learning experience of our students, right? And I know there are a lot of buildings being built now and, and whatnot. And, um, I think in some cases, that is necessary. I mean, buildings get old, they wear out and we need new ones. Um, but in other cases, um, maybe not so much, right? Maybe, maybe the money's better used, um, in some other way in terms of, uh, hiring more personnel. Um, I think Mr. Tyler, Mr. Murphy sort of broke that down for us a little bit, but it's still something that, that I would like to look at and consider, um, whether or not this particular building is necessary, or maybe it might be better to renovate as opposed to build, right? Those kind of questions, um, I would like to raise.
Thank you so much, Dr. Farr. Uh, Ms. Beasley?
Thank you. Um, so as far as infrastructure, I think that we're gonna have to look at the current budget that we have now that we're working under because uh, as Mr., as Dr. Farr said earlier, if there are ventilation systems in our schools that aren't gonna allow us to reopen because we're breathing in the same air, those need to be fixed. Uh, and we'll also need more money to hire extra teachers because the teachers who are teaching online, the kids who decide to say virtual versus the one in person, that should never be the same teacher. Because just as we're doing this live right now, there's two of you lovely teenagers that are working like questions and trying to keep up with the chat and it's not fair to ask our teachers to do that when like, I can't figure out how to work my phone most of the time, but, you know, so we're gonna have to have more money for that and we absolutely need to update the curriculums that you all, that you all are learning and make sure that you're actually learning correct history and not what we want you to learn as correct history.
Thank you. Uh, with that, we will now transition to our coping with COVID nineteen student-to-student study segment. Throughout the spring and summer, the student voice team conducted a coping with COVID study that received over nine thousand responses from all across Kentucky. The questions in this segment draw on this data summarized in our executive summary. We will start off with a question about student post-secondary plans and then transition into one about students' overall mental health. Uh, for this question, we will start with Ms. Beasley. In the coping with COVID survey, roughly one-fourth of students described a change in their future plans. And fifty-four percent of those changes were negative. As a board member, how could you ensure students' post-secondary plans remain feasible and that guidance is accessible during this crisis and beyond? You'll have around one minute to respond.
First of all, bless y'all's hearts for trying to figure out this online learning stuff. This year for my kids seemed to be better than the end of the school year last year, which was a disaster, but I think that, um, that you kids need choices. Like, not only do we need to talk about going to college, but you all need to have the opportunity to think about like your vocational schools. I have a daughter who goes to local trace and when she's done with high school, she'll have, be able to be a vet tech assistant. So you are, a- and the building trades, like, I don't know that some of you all realize that you can make thirty dollars an hour as an electrician working with your hands and not go thousands of dollars into debt going to college. Not the college is not great. I myself, I'm going to college. But I think that, that you all need to have opportunities to earn real money when you get out of school and, and I think that being stuck in a classroom for four more years after what y'all have gone through this far is gonna be the perfect thing for you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would like to briefly address a question that we received often in the forum and it is about counselors and accessibility with counselors. So would any candidate like to respond? You'll have approximately a minute. Open floor.
Is there times that you guys can't talk to your counselors at school? Like, can you not like, email a counselor or have that kind of mental health?
Um, yes, the problem with that is the student-to-counselor ratio is extremely large. So oftentimes, I mean, I personally do not know my counselor and I'm sure that other students feel the same way.
Gotcha. So we need to have more people in your all schools that are you are able to connect to, whether they be counselors or just another adult that you can even vent to. Is that what you guys are saying?
Yes, and have counselors help us with, um, college and.
There are also programs out there, I don't know if your school's ETS help like kids who don't have a parent who've gone through college, actually like know how to take their, they're testing things to get there and that's through BCTC. So we might like, as a district, try to reach out to some of those and maybe some of those people can volunteer at your schools to help you all get college-ready or whatever it is that you want to do in your next, next life.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, we will now move on to our mental health segment and we will begin this question with Mr. J- segment and we will begin this question with Mr. Jones. So overall, there was an over 50% increase in the number of students who wanted but lacked access to mental health services. How could schools address this concern? And I, yes, if you have anything to add to that question, because I do believe that it was kind of addressed.
Okay, can you hear me? Yeah, I saw the data on the mental health questions and the work that you all have done. It's, uh, I, I was, I wanted to mention that there's a very large number of students that you surveyed, so this, uh, is a pretty significant piece of data. And I did see the mental health, uh, piece in there. I talked to a guidance counselor here in Fayette County about it and, uh, wondered, you know, what are they doing during the pandemic? I don't know, it, it may be something that varies from school to school or even counselor to counselor, but I think at least some counselors are trying to reach out to students to ensure that they're receiving counseling and mental health services that they need. I think we have to remember that we're in a pandemic. We've never planned, uh, or designed the school system to operate in this way. But I think this is one of those stress tests that we put the district under where we've realized that the absence of mental health services, the absence of counseling services during this situation, we've got to figure out how we can, how we can deliver those a lot more systematically.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Jones, for your insights. I believe I can speak on behalf of most students when I say that it truly gives us great comfort to know that our school board values our concerns.
Perfect. So, um, well now, you know, all of the conversations we've been having really kind of speak to this last segment that we have, which, um, is a call to action. So we're going to transition more into an open-ended dialogue. And so I would say the student voice team's work has always been grounded in equity and justice. Um, and we like to end discussions like these with a call to action, just highlighting the importance of student voices in these spaces of civic discussion. Anna and I are of course both high school students and collectively with the support of both Student Voice National and the Preacher Committee Student Voice Team, we've advocated for the inclusion of student voices in education policy, research and advocacy. So we want to conclude our discussion today with a couple targeted questions. Um, and if there are any brief concluding remarks you'd like to make, you can include these here. We'll give each person about two minutes to respond and we'll start with Mr. Murphy. So Mr. Murphy, how do you incorporate equity and justice in your work on the school board? You'll have around two minutes to respond.
The, the most important thing I can do is listen. And to the point that, um, Dr. Farr made earlier, uh, the board does have an equity council. I think that there are opportunities that we could engage that equity council more effectively. One way is Dr. Farr mentioned is, is bringing teacher voice back on it. But also the board has the potential to issue requests or charges to the council and say, you know, hey, there's, there's a topic that, uh, may be a specific topic that would be difficult for the board to drill down into. But let's have the equity council look at that, evaluate it, do the work, do the research, come up with some recommendations because, because that they are having conversations with folks on the ground, making this work happen. And then bring recommendations back to us and we can move forward. The other way is building community partnerships. Uh, Fayette County Public Schools does not exist in a silo. We don't exist on an island. Certainly this pandemic has proven that to us. Um, but to the point that, um, I believe Ms. Green raised earlier, we have two universities and colleges here, uh, that we could really tap into for a talent pool to bring in educators and particularly, um, expand the number of minority educators that we have, uh, in the district. We have, uh, you know, business partners that we can engage, uh, in various apprenticeship programs and opening up opportunities and potential career paths for our students. Cause as Ms. Beasley mentioned, you know, not every student is going to go to college and not every student has to go to college. There are various opportunities for our children. So to me, uh, the work of equity is multifaceted. And, uh, it requires us to, number one, listen. Number two, based on those, that listening to act and to, um, plan and then act according to those plans. And then number three, to engage, uh, to, to, to take advantage of our position in the community as the second largest employer and, um, really embrace those partnerships that we have, um, to, to not just talk about equity, because that's something that's easy to talk about, but actually do, uh, the work. And the other big piece, and again, I'll reiterate this, is, um, early childhood education. We've, we've got to engage our children and our families early. We've got to meet our families where they are. We can't expect that if we build it, they will come, right? We can't expect just to have parent-teacher conferences and have families come into our buildings. We need to find creative ways, uh, to go into every community in Fayette County and build relationships and engage our families because they are partners, uh, in this journey. And, and I think we could be doing more of that to expand those opportunities.
Yeah, for sure. And I think, you know, going back to that notion of students as partners, educators as partners in this whole decision-making processes are essentially what back up this notion of equity. Um, and Ms. Green, I would like to pose the next question to you. Thank you so much, Mr. Murphy. What changes, if any, do you believe should be made at the district level in order to create a more positive school climate? And you'll have around two minutes to respond.
Okay, so let me repeat that. Uh, what changes can be made at the district level to have a more positive?
School climate.
Um, I think that again is multifaceted. I think first we need to respect and lift up our educators as the voice of our voiceless student. Um, I've heard over and over on this campaign and even beforehand that they feel that at the district level, they are not being valued as experts on the situations that their students are in. Um, I've heard about this specifically from teachers that teach a heavy Latino population, that those families can't speak for their students. And so they would like to be recognized as the voice for those students. So that, so that is one way that we can make it better. I think another is to make sure that the students are comfortable in their learning environment. And one small thing to look at is the safety plan. And I, I would ask if I was on the board, the next time that it's reviewed is that we look at the use of police in schools. I don't think that they need to be there for decision-making. I mean, for, um, behavior, um, monitoring or anything like that. Um, I think if we have to have them at the door only for safety, and I think the police need to understand that their, what their role is, because it's not always a safe place for students because we don't know the trauma that may come from a student's life. So we need to recognize that, that those experiences may not always feel comfortable for the students or even the staff. And then I think also providing more mental health workers in the schools, whether it's social workers, counselors and then training our teachers as well, um, to be able to communicate with our students and then quickly respond back to those families.
Yeah, and I think, you know, you spoke exactly to what question just came up in the chat as well, um, about police in schools. And of course, that is a discussion on its own, but everything does come back to, um, what makes sense for our students and educators in this environment. Um, and as a learning environment, you know, that's obviously a question that's been up in the air. So um, I'm glad you were able to speak to that as well. Um, and the next question we'll pose to Dr. Farr. Dr. Farr, how will you support and work with students of color, students with disabilities, low income and LGBTQ plus students? As well as other marginalized people and their families?
Okay, well, that's a good question. And you know, that has been sort of my work, even as an academic, I mean, I've been, been involved in many other, um, social political groups and organizations and have organized myself on behalf of all of those groups you mentioned. For example, when I, um, taught at St. Joseph's University in Philadelphia before moving here, we had a lot of issues around the LGBTQ community. So what we had done was we had, um, a, a group come in to train faculty and staff and students in terms of dealing with, uh, issues faced by the LGBT community. It was called Safe Zones Training, right? And so we spent a weekend in workshops. Just sort of learning and even learning about our own prejudices to some extent, right? And learning how to be in solidarity with members of the LGBT community. And at the end of, uh, end of the training, we all got little stickers to put on our doors that said Safe Zone, so that, um, faculty, students, staff, whomever on campus, um, needed to talk. They, they knew that the offices with space, uh, Safe Zone on the door was a safe place and they had an ally in that office. And they could go in that, in that office and talk with someone that was not just going to talk, but, but listen to them, hear them and deal with the problem, right? And so that, that model, I think, is something that we could use in the Fayette County school system, right? Regarding all the groups that you mentioned, as I said in my, my opening statements, that all of the ELS of society, all of the prejudices in our society, um, work their way into our public school system. And so you have a wide range of groups, all of those you've mentioned, who are somehow marginalized within our school system, right? And, um, we need to be able to, there needs to be a presence for, uh, students who belong to those groups that they know that they have, uh, people in solidarity with them, who will speak on their behalf, who will work for them and make change for them. And I think the Safe Zone models is, model is a perfect one. And there are other models like that, there are other organizations that deal with, um, economic inequalities that deal with, race and all those kinds of things, right? And I think as a board member, I would like to be in communication or create, create a dialogue between our school system and some of these organizations that can come in and sort of help us think through how to deal with, uh, the issues that these groups are facing that you mentioned.
Perfect. Um, I think you really just hit that, you know, exactly like we wanted it to be said. I think it's important that we're recognizing, you know, that our school board shouldn't just be serving the students at the top that already receive so much support. But they should be serving everyone and those that, um, are marginalized in any way, especially those that even in, you know, these dual pandemics of both systemic racism and COVID-19, um, have illuminated so many more of these inequities within our education system that have been there for much longer than just these past six months. But for the sake of time, we're going to move on straight to the closing. To all the candidates as well as Mr. Murphy, thank you all so much for your insights and perspective on ways to improve our schools in the midst of such a profound moment in history. A special thank you to all of our incredible teachers, students, administrators, parents and community members who are also able to join us today. This evening's discussion was purely shaped by your experiences, stories and willingness to amplify the voices and concerns of your students and fellow community members as we experience such changing circumstances within our education. We're hopeful that tonight stood as a testament that local elections are just as important as national ones and often less chaotic. This is a pivotal year for our country, our state and our district. So don't sit this one out. If you've not already voted by mail, we encourage you to vote early, um, in person and use your voice this election, but also empower others to do the same. So thank you all so much for your time this evening and we all hope you have a great night.
Thank you guys. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.